I love a good vacation.
Hmm.
And I think we need it.
I love a good vacation. Yes.
Heard that.
Public health benefit. Yes.
Absolutely. And I think the
Self-care is the best care.
Listeners and viewers must know that we are taking a month off, a little break between air horn between the idea was between December fifteenth and January fifteenth because not as much happens politically in spaces like that. And then obviously, our final episode, it's just like, things are happening all over the place.
All of the things.
It's a banger.
But we are going to take a little break. We will be back on Tuesday, January eighteenth. So this will be episode two oh one, this one right now. That's our final one for the Christmas holiday. And am I allowed to say Christmas?
I mean, if you want.
Okay.
Isn't it Fox News? There's a war on Christmas?
There was a war on it. And I thought we'd be on the side against it. And
I just took a crucifix off my wall. Say whatever you want.
Okay.
Which that was not true.
She did. There's a lot of conversation on that, folks.
Soy Mexicana.
What what it what's everybody gonna do with their like four weeks off?
Not a fucking thing.
Oh, I love it.
Four we I mean, it's like one extra night a week. Where the possibility of like hanging out with people exists.
Mm hmm.
So every Monday night, the Voices crew is gonna get a text from me to be like, do you wanna go have a drink?
Hey, you wanna hang out? You wanna hang out?
I like that. I'm gonna try and do some more work on the Sack Paul's The Money project. Because all the the local races are gonna start up very soon. So that just means me in front of a bunch of spreadsheets, which it doesn't sound sexy, and it's not, but it's it's fun work once it's done.
I don't know. Some people get off on that.
It's not sexy at all, but it but it's necessary and it's important. I actually am gonna be doing some sexy things because I am mostly gonna be off during the time that we are off.
Hell, yeah.
Really excited about a very long extended vacation. And just being able to hang out and not owe anyone anything. And I'm also, one of my closest friends in life is coming to visit and we are going to drive the California coast right after the New Year.
Yeah.
And I'm super excited about it because I've never done it. So, yeah, so it's gonna be great. I'm I'm looking forward to coming back rested with some hot takes in twenty twenty two.
Wow.
The takes are gonna be super duper hot, like Thai food hot.
I keep looking at my I keep looking at myself thinking it is time for a vacation. Every time I catch a glimpse, like, I don't know if I can bring any takes.
You look great. I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, you look great and the hair looks fluffy.
All right, folks, why don't we get started? There's a lot, a lot to discuss on this one, and we wanna go out with a bang until next month. So let's get rolling.
Let's do it.
See you rolling.
Hello, everyone. You have kempa.
Oh, God. Shannon.
And Flo.
Shannon is ready for this episode. I can feel it.
Man, I'm so fucking tired.
Be ready. Oh.
So for folks who don't know, we are recording this on Monday, December thirteenth. It is just the beginning of this multiple day storm coming through the Sacramento region. Whenever that happens, we kind of assume Shannon's going to to be a little affected on the show because you are in emergency homeless services. And days can get sort of intense because the need of folks living on the streets is so deeply in how would you put it? It's it's just it's it's magnified by magnitudes. And and, you know, they they come to you for help. Yeah, so yeah, do you wanna talk a little bit about that to start the show?
Um, sure. I mean, I think that is, you know, for any of us who and there are many who find ourselves working on the front lines directly serving folks experiencing homelessness when a storm of of this size is predicted, we're just, it really is sort of a you kind of gotta gear up, get yourself as rested as you can. And you you know, you go into your workspaces knowing or your volunteer spaces, knowing that days are gonna be long and and it's sort of a, everything is is like, it feels like triage. Every interaction is just like, what, how can we get this person to a space, a comfortable space? Whether it be like a cup of coffee or dry off their feet and get some warm socks on them or, you know, somebody who comes in and doesn't have any clothes on and, you know, needs a a pair of an outfit. So that's what days, days like today bring. And it really is just this, these moment after moment of being faced with human suffering. And it's so much more for the people who are actively living through that and having to endure the weather with no safe space to go. But I think there's also the vicarious trauma that exists for the people who are actively serving. So it's a it's a layered, it's a layered thing. And this, we knew this storm was coming.
Right.
And there was not a we'll talk about this, right? There was not a lot slash there was actually erased that there was nothing
Yeah.
that was provided for people last night. So.
Well, it's, yeah, I let's just talk about, you know, the the main topic of it. By the way, folks, Skylar is not on. I don't know if you figured it out or gleaned since we've had our six months back from our last break. But basically, anytime there's a discussion on local things, we just don't have Skylar on because he works in local stuff now and he just, that's just not what we do anymore. So, you know, he's out working, doing his thing right now while we we discuss these local issues. I think what today we wanna talk about is some local frustrations. And in particular, with a particular city council member who has been trying to find ways to circumvent some laws that have constitutionally, some rulings that have constitutionally protected our unhoused community. Basically, they're trying to work around it to terrorize them, to move them out of their district. And it's just not okay in a time or a place like this and in a context like this. So we're gonna do the best we can to sort of discuss that context. Can somebody in Shannon, I know you've just done a bunch of talking already, but maybe you could talk us briefly through what Commerce Circle is, who was living there? This is this is sort of a camp slash trailer car setup, right? Just north of the American River that had, give or take, one hundred sixty trailers and cars, vehicles. And it was a longstanding community that the city has not been bothering in recent years. But something changed recently and then they did, right?
Yeah, right. So it's a, you know, as mentioned, a sizable community of both campers, car campers, RV campers, folks sleeping in tents. And it's sort of just like, you know, have this this space back. It's called Commerce Circle. So, yeah, north of the American River? No.
Yes.
Okay, no, I'm like trying to picture the rivers. It's it's best for me like landmarks. So like, it's over in near like the Expo Drive Costco.
By the Costco, by the REI. Yeah.
Yeah, all that. And this is just like, it's a, as mentioned, it's a place where like the city had really just been leaving folks alone. But there were people in that district, business owners and the council person of that district, District Three. The which over that's all the River District Councilmember Jeff Harris, who was involved in a massive sweep to get folks out of that area. And that's something that was, there was clearly like a business partnership that was involved. There were requests made. Both of business owners and the council member, just like this very shitty communication that really villainized the folks experiencing homelessness in in that area and and then ended up criminalizing them, right? Because they were cited. And violently swept and separated from the community that had been established for you know, since pre pandemic, really. There's been folks out there and the community has like grown and has diminished in size and grown and it, you know, just like, just like they do, right? People come and go.
So I wanna discuss this council member Jeff Harris in District Three. This district is sort of that riverish kind of area. It is also East Sacramento, sort of the richer Fab forties area, as well as parts of, I believe, South Natomas. It's, if you look at the last ten years in our city, it's like one of the more weirdly gerrymandered districts. It doesn't fully make sense. And he is a hardcore, like, he's he's a construction guy, he's a developer, and he comes from the mentality that money rules over. It's basically property rules over people, right? Property is more important than people. And Jeff Harris acts in that way. And he's acted most recently in a way that is is just terrorizing these folks. And I wanted us to sort of be able to paint that picture today. You know, he ever since the city started going toward their plan for homelessness with all of the different campsites being presented and the different safe grounds, they have really pulled back on homeless sweeps compared to what we had. Like, obviously, they're still doing sweeps, but less so. What we're finding is that the city manager Howard Chan, he is less likely to do a sweep unless a city council member says, come to my district, get these people out of here. We want them out. And he will go in, he will go against the constitutional, you know, Martin versus Boise decision, where that decision said, if there's not enough shelter beds or housing in a region, it is unconstitutional, it's cruel and unusual punishment to roust people who are just trying to camp and get some rest, right? And just be Harris basically said to Howard Chan, get in here. Get these folks out of here. Me and my business folks do not want them here anymore. And Shannon, you were talking a little bit about sort of the human effect that that had. Theresa Clift at the Bee wrote a very humanizing piece on this, sort of showing how families lost entire vehicles that they were gonna sell. And they were gonna use the money from those vehicles for Christmas presents. They can't do that now, right? People lost entire trailers. So that now they don't have a trailer to stay in. Now they have to sleep in a car, right? You don't have a range. You don't have a kitchen in your car. You don't have a shower in your car. This drastically makes your life worse. I heard of one family getting taken apart, children from their parent, right? This is the type of terror that Jeff Harris is putting on these people, right? This is a couple hundred people in this spot, too. And I really, really want folks to know that and that there's a face to this. And it's Jeff Harris. And he's not the only council member that has done this ever, but him doing this right now directly in the center of the holiday season, just as these storms are coming in, it is, it's horrifying.
Absolutely. I I'm I'm reminded of two things as we're talking about this. First, I I almost wanted to like bring a little levity to this conversation by saying, didn't we record this episode already at least two or three times this this year?
In January, yeah.
I feel like we did this in January. I feel like we did this again when there were like triple digit record weather over the summer. Like, we're having the same conversation because the problem's not going away. And so, no, if you were listening and thinking, didn't they already talk about this? Like, yes, and it's happening again because apparently nobody cares. The other thing that 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 strikes me is, you know, there's a slide that I sometimes use when I'm when I'm training and talking about, you know, racial equity. And it's about privilege. And obviously, privilege does isn't only, you know, situated in racial equity, but it's a it's a good example. And essentially, what it says is that, like, you know, privilege means that, you know, something doesn't necessarily have to be a problem for you because it's not a problem for you personally, right? And I feel like this is a prime example of privilege of the idea that you are more inconvenienced by people experiencing homelessness than you are committed to actually solving the problem. And so you are more than willing to destroy people's lives without even having an appreciation for the consequences of the decisions that you're making. Because that that's what stands out to me in all of this is that if you're to sit down and have conversations with these offices that are hell bent on, you know, on sweeping places and getting people out, their main feeling is about aesthetics. Their main feeling is about like, I don't like what this looks like for my neighborhood. I want my property values to increase. I wanna build wealth and all of that. And it's like, how can we prioritize your comfort inconvenience when we haven't centered people's humanity first?
Yeah.
That's nice to have, and we haven't even gotten there. And so that's what I see Jeff Harris doing is is very much situating himself and centering himself as like, this is an inconvenience to me. And so I wanna do something about it because it's a problem, but not recognizing what the root cause of the problem is. The problem is actually that we have people who are unable to afford housing and unable to secure housing in our region. And if we don't start there, then we end up doing things like this and having a lot of people actually applauding the efforts and saying like, I'm glad because that was an eyesore to me, too.
Yeah, I think, oh, go ahead. I think the other part of this, specifically talking about Jeff Harris, is that it's not only this endeavor to put you know, his comfort and the comfort of the people in in the class of which he is a part at the forefront, but also to make sure that he is actively perpetuating stereotypes.
Yes.
Which keep people in these cycles of violence at the hands of people in power, at the hands of people. You know, of just like neighbor folks, working class people even, like, maybe not working class people. I don't wanna like start to vilify that. But you know, like, like, your average person in District Three is is now listening to Jeff Harris talk about folks experiencing homelessness. And and he's saying things like, they're on drugs. They're all, it's drugs and it's crime.
And it's sex work and it's there's filth. He likes to use the word filth.
Right. And it's all just like, you know, it's like the just the the Wild West out there, right? There's just no, there's there's no sort of like control, no order. And what we have, so therefore, what we have to do is bring order to this chaos.
Yes.
And 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 how do we do that? We involve an arm of law enforcement, right? Which is code enforcement, they may not be SAC PD, but that's still, it's still policing, right? It's still walk, it's still going out and citing people and it's still criminalizing. Like, these are still folks like ACAB to code enforcement.
Code enforcement, they're cops, ACAB, yes.
Like, one hundred percent, right? And we so Jeff Harris, just on December seventh, there was a two o'clock Housing Authority meeting where there was all of these conversations were happening about the Commerce Circle sweep. And on record, Jeff Harris, as as a council member Valenzuela of District Four and the mayor were talking about how ineffective this sweep is and how they just didn't agree with with how it was rolled out. Jeff Harris, on the record, says, I certainly disagree with the idea that moving people is meaningless or that it has no efficacy. Like, this is a person who believes that it is effective to terrorize people.
Yes, fully. And that's what makes him so disgusting to me. Like, I I do, I honestly think Jeff Harris is a disgusting human being for this because
Oh, totally.
He's sort of, he reminds me of a lot of nineteen nineties neoliberal white politicians, right? The Clinton era type white politician Democrat, where it's like, I say things nicely, I dress really clean. And I use language that dehumanizes the people I'm terrorizing.
Right.
And thus, the local media will be like, oh, yeah, so he's not so bad. Like, I think he's got a point. And to your point about like members of the community parroting that back, that happens so, so much with him. And there's like a lot of like dad types, like white dad types. One I'm thinking of is Brad Brannon, former data guy at the Bee. He's always hopping on Twitter during these conversations and being like, this is a very complex problem and blah, blah, blah. Fuck you, it's not complex. Housing.
No, it's not.
Housing. And then we don't have homelessness. That's it. Brad, by you saying it's complex, that's you saying that I wanna find a way for me to be able to sleep at night so we can get them out of my face. I don't care if you terrorize them. Let's just use better language. So it's not my fucking problem anymore. Fuck you, Brad. And you know, fuck you, Steve Moviglio. He's center of these conversations, too.
Gosh, yeah.
America's landlord, Steve Moviglio.
Here's the thing that bothers me, right? It's like, okay, so we know all of this. And we have Boise on the record as being the law of the land, supposedly, right? And we know that all of the available shelter is occupied. And yet, this still happens. Like, that's the part that's frustrating to me is like, how do how does this gain traction among seemingly, you know, law abiding, and I'm putting this in air quotes for those of you who are not on, you know, YouTube, like, law abiding, you know, you know, our our government officials. And I'm like, how is this? How is this allowed when you provided no alternatives for people? You've provided no housing for anyone and you're coming by and taking people's livelihood. Like, when you say terrorism, I'm like, I I almost, I I want a stronger word because there's something about this that is simply unconscionable. And if I like, I was outside voluntarily.
That's, I think, what makes it a little deeper to me.
Yes, yes. But I was outside like voluntarily earlier today. And what I said, I literally said this outside. I was like, Flo, you are outside by choice right now. And this is terrible. Imagine if this was your reality. This is your privilege right now of being able to be outside by choice and know that this is a temporary situation. Like, I it's hard for me to even imagine fixing my lips, fingers, or whatever other decision making orifices I have to be able to then turn around and say, I'm gonna take from you what you have. I'm going to deny you the opportunity to be able to have what is a core and essential to being a healthy and whole human. Like, I don't, I I in my bones, I don't get it because it just doesn't make sense to me that you would there's something broken. There's something, there's something insidious about being able to be witnessing this storm where we can literally hear the rain falling and the winds whipping. And somebody's thought is, yeah, you know what we should do is clean up these streets and get rid of this blight.
I think there is, there is a special kind of evil that is harnessed in in the mind and body of Jeff Harris. If he can look out in to what is currently his district and see that suffering. And especially during storms, like the ones that we have had recently, like the one that is actively happening as we are recording. And you see people like living in puddles of water. And they're like, their tents have been ravaged. There's no way for them to get dry. Like, they are these folks are somehow so resilient and there's no way that they should have to be. And this guy is like, you are the problem.
I think it comes from a dark place. I think there is like sort of a gods and clods mentality that that you deserve this. That's what Jeff thinks. I don't understand how you could view it any other way to rationalize that kind of terror against folks when we obviously have a system that that cannot provide, cannot sustain. People cannot make wages to have housing, simply, very simply, to have affordable housing in our region. Like, the math is super simple. You consider yourself a numbers guy, Jeff, look at those fucking numbers. It's not complex.
I think there's also something like, you know, for for a lot of people, I've I've had lots of conversations with folks who find themselves closer to where Jeff Harris finds himself. And all it takes is a visit to meet a person who is experiencing what what all of our unhoused neighbors are experiencing as we speak. And like, you take a moment for that that connection of humanity and you realize like, and and their minds began to change because all of a sudden, this is not some complex issue. This is a person that is suffering. And I think what is, what is what makes that like evil, that that state terror at the hands of Jeff Harris even worse is that
And Howard Chan.
And Howard Chan is these these folks who are just like unwilling, unwilling to allow any sort of like human connection, right? Like, it just, the 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 human connection doesn't like like bust into whatever they're like to state terror armor is, right? But but we can see Jeff Harris as a local hero. You know, lauded as a local hero by
Talk about that. Yeah.
This is gonna irritate me because I cannot let the Howard Chan thing just kind of go by. Howard gets the benefit of being seen as the like, I do whatever the council members tell me. And I'm like, that's bullshit and you know it. And so that is what really irritates me about him because he picks and chooses where he's gonna operate at the top of his scope of work and where he's gonna operate at the very bottom. And those are very political decisions. Anybody out here talking about Howard is the greatest? And Howard, you know, just does his job and the problem is everybody else. And I'm kind of like, no, it's not. Also, to me, this is like, if we don't get that there's an equity issue. Equity is about not treating everybody the same because everybody's circumstances aren't the same. And so when I'm looking at the B article and they're saying like, vehicles that are owned, this is literally a quote, vehicles owned by homeless individuals are subject to the same traffic and parking laws as those owned by everyone else. Meaning the vehicles must be registered and can't be parked in the same place for more than seventy two hours, according to a city's webpage. That is the definition of not being equitable.
Right.
Because you are, you are taking people who have nowhere else to go. They don't have a property that they can lay claim to to be able to stay in for more than seventy two hours and saying, you're subject to the same rules and regulations as somebody who just parked their car and just didn't come back to get like, that's not the same thing. And so what what irritates me about this is like, being able to be disconnected from your humanity so seriously that you can't even understand that. And Shannon, I I totally agree with you. that you can't even understand that. And I, I totally agree with you that there is a way that meeting people and being able to be connected to them individually is one of the, one of the ways that our, our empathy shows up. It's like, it's, it's, I guess, part of what we, what it means to be a human being. But my challenge there is that like, that we're not forward-thinking enough to not just come up with individual solutions. And what immediately comes to mind is, I don't know if you remember, but this is probably, you know, seven to ten years ago, there was a man who was like walking like tens of miles to get to work every day for this minimum wage job and was taking like multiple buses and still had like, I, I think it was like a seven to ten mile walk. And when his story became a, this very like American way of his story of perseverance of he was gonna get to his job no matter what. And I'm like, first of all, fuck that job. Each way every day like
That job's birthday.
Fuck that job. But also then everybody rallied around this person and was like, let's buy him a car. Let's do this and the other. Instead of being like, why is it, he's not the only one? And why is it that our, our natural inclination is to say, oh, there's a problem for you? You seem like you are a good dude. And I'm putting that also in air quotes for those of you not on YouTube. You seem like a good dude, so I'm going to throw money at this and make myself feel better by saying this is a one-off and you're a good dude who fell on hard times. But I'm not gonna take a step back and say, how many other good dudes, also in air quotes, are out here who are experiencing the same thing or who because of, because they maybe aren't, aren't as physically able, can't walk ten miles every day to go to work, so they don't have a job and you don't have the same empathy for them. Like, how do you not take a step back and just ask yourself? If I'm seeing this in one person, how many more people are experiencing this? And I think that's the problem for me is like,
Right.
You mentioned the empathy of one person and like connecting, but like, I feel like the problem is that we are so individualistic as a culture that so many people will see that one person and will say, I want to help them. Not, I want to help all of the them.
Yeah.
Yep. You know, and we, sorry, we really have to move on. So I'm going to tie this into the next topic. But I think the equity portion fits really well into, to this conversation. I'm not gonna show the clip. Uh, it's not worth it. Uh, I don't like to see or hear Jeff Harris speak. But
Same.
We will share with you, dear listeners and viewers, uh, a link if you'd like it. I posted the video on social. But over the weekend, just a few days after Jeff Harris got he and Howard Chan hand in hand with the local business folks performed this terror against these people who had nothing. Just a few days later, this past Saturday, Jeff Harris was the recipient of a quote Heroes for the Homeless Award. And the clip is absurd. I mean, he hasn't done anything for people, people who are unhoused, right? Um, and it's like, I don't know, it, it ties in a lot of charity culture. And I think charity culture really like, it flies in the face of, I think, a lot of the equity talk you've, you've just been sort of uh, sort, sort of discussing here, Flo. It also flies in the face of kind of like the difference between, it, it, it really outlines the difference between charity and solidarity. Um, Jeff Harris took this award and he, he was like, you know, I, you know, I, I do my best. I'm building that au pair unit on my property in the Fab forties. I'm trying, that's, this is how I'm gonna fight homelessness. But it's like, it reminds me of, I didn't, I don't know if you heard about this, uh, this, and maybe I'm gonna take us a little off track, but I'll, I'll try and keep it brief. This, uh, this German, uh, captain, a ship captain who rescued a bunch of migrants who were drowning in the Mediterranean. And her name was Pia Clem. And the mayor of Paris wanted to give her a medal for it. And she said, fuck no. And here's her quote, I'm gonna say it real quick. I'm not a humanitarian. I'm not there to quote aid. I stand in solidarity. We do not need medals. We do not need authorities deciding about who is a hero and who is illegal. In fact, they are in no position to make this call because we are all equal. What we need are freedom and rights. It is time what we call out hypocrite honoring and fill the void with social justice. It's time we cast all medals into spearheads of revolution. Documents and housing for all, freedom of movement and residence. Um, like I, I just think that that is, it's such a great way to just, to just show you how silly this capitalist system we have is and these nice guys doing charity, uh, who are really just people of capital that are using that to gain social capital so they can continue this kleptocracy, this, this harmful state terror system that we have today. Um, and yeah, so Jeff receiving that award, it just, that really reminded me uh, of that. Um, and like meanwhile, Jeff is still trying to terrorize these folks, right? Uh, I don't know if you all know, but the American River Flood Control District, he wrote them a letter. This is public record. Basically asking them on the block, it's basically the southernmost block of Commerce Circle. Uh, asking them because they own that property, it's technically private property. So Martin versus Boise doesn't apply, so they can be cruel and unusual to these folks. Asking them to uh, basically say, get off our private property. Um, I don't know, like this is, this is the kind of guy we're dealing with.
I mean, it's a, it's, this is the kind of guy who um picks and chooses, right? Who uses his position of privilege to pick and choose who he's gonna help and who he's not in this way that is like, I'm only gonna help the people who have the bootstraps. Right? Like, I'm only going to, like, for example, this Heroes for the Homeless Award that was given to him by Joshua's House, which is a hospice program for um, people experiencing homelessness. It's not, it's still i- in the works, right? It's not actually like in a building just yet. Um, but this, you know, it's a, it's a relationship with a person of privilege who, the executive director of that organization. Um, and in the same way that, you know, he, he um, Jeff Harris has loved Saint John's program for real change for many years, which is a, it's a shelter program, uh, because there's a lot of things that you need to do in order to, you know, make it work with that program. Um, so he like, he, he picks and chooses, right? And it's just,
Yeah.
It's toxic charity and his and, and giving him awards and like shout outs for all the good work that he does uh, to, you know, fellow homeless service providers. You are only perpetuating or, or fueling this like toxic terrorist, the local terrorist who's willing to just completely disregard the wellness of the people that we serve. You cannot, you cannot do what Jeff Harris does by sweeping spaces, I'm sorry, by sweeping camps and then be lauded as a hero by another like organization that serves people experiencing homelessness. There is absolutely no reason that that should happen. It's bullshit.
Completely agree.
Hello, Shannon, and I have gone on for a while. I don't know if you wanted to.
I mean, I feel like I rented on for a while as well, so.
Feeling so ranty.
Yeah. Well, let, let me, let me try and bring the narrative forward. Um, Mayor Daryl Steinberg is, I mean, credit where it's due. He is uh, putting out a proposal so that uh, basically the city would not be able to tow a vehicle if they don't have a safe space for the vehicle to go. Um, they would have to, what, what else? They um,
It's
They'd have to stop towing vehicles unless they can offer shelter as well. Shannon, did you have anything else to, to add to that?
Uh, did you already say this, that, that if vehicle, like the towing of vehicles would not be at the expense of the owner?
Yeah, wouldn't be at the, no, I did not say that. That's important too. Um, and, and the owner can get the vehicle back, right?
Right.
Um, these are all very important things. And really, it's, it's a lot more equity minded than anything we've seen so far. Um, and so that's like pretty exciting. Uh, he is presenting this on Tuesday, December fourteenth uh, in the afternoon, I think two o'clock the meeting starts, folks. Call in, write in, in support of this. It's really important. Obviously, the monster Jeff Harris is gonna be against it. Sean Laloie, just days after Jeff Harris started, uh, you know, terrorizing these folks. We went out there to his district today. Now Sean is terrorizing the folks who've been removed by Jeff, who are now in his district. And this is the, the fucking meaningless cat and mouse game that's going on. And you know, honestly, just another note on the, to the, the people who's just very vapidly use the term like, that's a complex issue. Yusuf, at the B, you're using the same thing. It's not that complex. It's social housing, it's affordable housing, it's not that complex. And it's just stopping terrorizing people until we have that for them.
The complexity of it lies in the webs that our local electeds are willing to weave, right? So that they make it more complex than it has to be.
Oh, what tangled web we weave when we practice to deceive.
I mean, you, it's like this whole, right? There's all these conversations about, there's all of this money that is, you know, available for local, for localities to shelter and to house people. And we're gonna get, we're gonna get this stuff rolling. We're gonna get people inside. And we have yet to see any of that.
Yeah, well, also the interests of capital will not allow the real answers to happen.
Right.
You know, we, we, there will be no land reform. There will be no taking any of property from Blackstone. There will be no building of social or public housing at a grand scale that's needed because the interests of capital will not let that happen. And they're the ones that pay these folks campaigns.
I was like, are we really surprised that Sean, I don't really, I'm not really a fan of affordable housing, Laloie
Right.
Is
Yep.
Is on this side of this issue like?
I think here's the thing, like, none of these moves are surprising. I mean, they're not, I don't think that they're surprising to those of us who co-host this show. Um, they are, however, things that we do have to continue bringing to the forefront of conversations because what is really import, what like, to, to what end, right? Why do we keep bringing this up? It's because we have the many seats on the dais that are up for election coming up, you know, in twenty-two. And in twenty-four and it's, so we need to like remember, twenty-two is like hu- is huge. It's, do you want?
Un, tre, cinque, sept, uno, tre.
How many languages was that? I thought that turned into French about halfway through.
I did.
But we have, so it's like, I think the other thing is that, you know, this is Kemba is often having the, his, what he calls his like sweet summer child moments on the show. Um, and, and I think that, you know, I can lean into, into that for, for this reason that we find right now in Sacramento, a, a space where people are dedicated, this, the community of advocates and activists are dedicated to pushing forward people over profit. And they are, there is so, there are so many people who are working toward that accountability, right? And taking notes and bringing the receipts. And I think that especially as these seats start to open up on the dais, um, there is real potential to change the leadership in our city. And there's real potential to see people in those seats who are willing to do the really hard work of carrying the weight that is being the person that actually gives a shit and doesn't just tune out of all of the emails and tune out of all of the meetings. Like the people who want, who are gonna work those day, you know, they shouldn't have to work fourteen or sixteen hour days, but they're willing to, to the end of getting to a space where we have a city of people who are not struggling to survive but pushing forward toward flourishing.
Yeah. You know, I, I know that we have a lot of listeners that are like fully fuck electoralism and I kinda get that. Um, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of a lot more of a yes to all uh, on things like this. Um, and you know, in as much as even, we know the folks who started Loaves and Fishes, right? Dan and Chris Delaney, they were anarchists and they were like, fuck a politician. And they, they were all about direct action. Um, I also look at some countries where you are electing full slates of lefties into entire legislatures and city councils and actually, you know, creating revolution um, through those means. And I don't know, I like, I, I would hope that some of the more direct action or oriented folks who are not electoralists, maybe we can all kind of come together and uh, dabble in one another's best practices so we can start really getting rid of some of the nastiest fuckers, right? Like Sean Laloie is, is no good. Um, Jeff Harris is no good. Um, oh, can we talk about some good news?
I mean, Jeff may be without a district. Is that what?
Yeah. So, Flo, do you want to talk about what redistricting is?
Sure. So, um, you know, this happens at the state as well as the county and the city level. Um, but at, at the city level in particular, every ten years, there is redistricting that occurs. And it basically is um, an independent commission comprised of people who cannot run for, cannot have occupied office um, in a certain number of years prior to serving on this commission and also can't run for office for a decade afterward. So the whole idea behind it is that especially at the city level, it's not supposed to be sort of like, you're trying to gerrymander this district for your own personal benefit when you decide to run for office. And so folks come together and, and look at the map and come up with a way to be able to parcel out the various um, districts in the city. And so the maps have been released that are proposed. Um, and it turns out that we have one city council member in particular who if, you know, if the map is approved, will not live in the district that he currently represents. And that council member Jeff Harris. So, um, yeah, so that, that's where we are in this process.
Yeah. So in this process, there's one final day to discuss this. This is also on Tuesday, December fourteenth. Folks, I would recommend reaching out. This is another call to action. If you really want to stick it to Jeff Harris, support this current iteration. Um, ESAC should belong to District Four and District Three should be uh, what is currently drawn in as. Um, basically, Jeff Harris lives in ESAC, which is east of the central city grid, right? Uh, it's one of the richest parts of towns called the Fab forties, right? All the developers live there, all the movers and shakers of the Sacramento region. Um, there's a, a couple of other rich neighborhoods, but that's like the one, right? You go there to look at the Christmas lights. He also, his district, the last ten years had what was called the River District, right?
Yep.
Uh, and that was the line just north of downtown and midtown Sacramento. It included a lot of the American River and a lot of, you know, the areas impacted by homelessness. Uh, and then on top of that, just north of that, uh, a portion of South Natomas, which um, really in a lot of ways, doesn't have a lot to do with like the land park type folks. So the Land Park constituency really ran the show. He was the only, they were the only folks he listened to. And so now the new redistricting has South Natomas, uh, and then a few other neighborhoods up there uh, north of the American River, having their own district. They will have their own representation, which has potential to be a really good and powerful thing. I think, um, Jeff Harris's neighborhood, East SAC, is now a part of our friend of the show, Um, Jeff Harris's neighborhood, East SAC, is now a part of our friend of the show, socialist Katie Valenzuela's district.
I just, I just love it.
So funny.
Love to think about it. So I watched the media, the redistricting meeting um, in real time. And people like sports and they yell at the television and when balls go to certain places. Insert ball joke here.
That's how sport works.
Um, sports ball, I don't know. This, this, me watching redistricting was like yelling at the, I was until the wee hours and the, the feeling, the like positive science that was happening in my body as I considered Jeff Harris hearing the news that he would be living in Katie Valenzuela's district was just so good, like the idea that he will have to move or wait and run against her.
From from ESAC to South Natomas, which is like, to me, that's fine, but he would never fucking do that.
Oh, gosh.
And that's what makes it funny.
Oh, I just, I just love it. I love it so much.
Yeah, well, it it I I guess my big thing is it's not over till it's over.
Right, right.
They did say, you know, the folks at Cap Radio are saying, the folks at the B are saying like, this is more or less it. There's gonna be public comment, but there will be no major changes to this map. Let's not rest on our laurels until this is over. Um, please do uh put in your public comment um for redistricting, saying that you support this. Uh, they messed up the week before, or they said they messed up in that they had the central city and ESAC together in this new district, but instead of calling it District Three, they called it District Four. And then they had District Four north of District Three, which is just like geographically didn't make sense. Not only that, I believe District Four would have been about zero percent of the population from the District Four in the decade before, which makes very, very little sense. Um, you know, our district, we just elected a new city council official last year. And they wanna just like remove our entire district and give it to this guy, Jeff Harris. Fuck that.
Nope, nope.
So it's really important, folks, to to reach out and to say you support it. Also say that you support Shannon living in District Seven.
No, no, I mean, that's what's gonna happen.
You're only, you only feel a way about District Seven because you feel like I, you want a certain type of representation. But what I'm saying to you is, that is the challenge.
Hmm. So should the joke here, folks, is very inside baseball. So District, so Curtis Park, Shannon's neighborhood, used to be a part of District Five, which was a part of
Just for the record, everyone, I'm not in in Curtis Park. I'm not like in fancy Curtis Park. I'm just
But you're in the limits of
I'm just barely Curtis Park.
Yeah, and um, like, no, yeah, she's like a block and a half away from Oak Park. And it used to be a part of D five, District Five, which was Oak Park and a lot of other cool neighborhoods in the region. Uh, and there's a lot of potential, like, cool things that can happen, you know, uh, in the future there, right? Um, that it wouldn't be a region ruled by like a bunch of, you know, Karens in Land Park, let's say. Shannon has been drawn into the district that includes Land Park, which is all white Karens, as well as Pocket, which is also super rich. And it might be the richest district now.
I think it's the, it's also according to the shit posted online, it's the whitest district.
No, ours is District Four will be.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it'll be like fifty-five percent white.
Ta dope.
I live with all the POCs. Ain't ain't no lines gonna change that.
Where are you in Eric Garis District, District?
I am.
Yeah.
I am in Garis District now.
I mean, I just need to move, is what? If the, if the map as it stands leaves me in District Seven, I, it's obviously a sign from the universe that I need to move. I don't know where.
Here's the thing, though. Flo sits right behind Councilmember Jennings at Kings Games. You can like get behind, get in his ear at the games.
I have
I also went to college with his daughter. Which makes things super awkward.
He knows who I am.
But I'm like, so, I mean, let's talk to your dad about this because, yeah.
Okay.
Listen, it's, yeah, whatever. Anyway, public comment on redistricting.
Yeah, and the fact that Jeff Harris has no district, it's just chef's kiss. Uh, this man would have to wait till twenty twenty-four to even consider running against Katie.
Also, if if the map as it, as it is now stands, uh, District Four, City Councilmember Katie Valenzuela takes over the River District, which would be an incredible win for that district that has really felt the um har- the violence and this, well, we said it earlier, the the state terror at the hands of Jeff Harris. So I think that there, it would be, we we've got to think about it in that way, too.
Yeah, River District, folks, is where so many emergency homeless services are. It's where a lot of folks who've been pushed out um from, you know, their neighborhoods who can't afford housing are now living. And and yeah, there's a lot of potential for positive stuff there. Um. All right, our tech editor might kill me, but I wanna, listen, we're not gonna be on for a month. Let's just do one more topic.
We can take seven minutes and talk about this next thing.
Okay.
Yes.
So we all know Chief Daniel Hahn, friend of the show.
Your yoga partner.
Whose yoga partner was he? Mine?
Yours.
Okay, and Sheriff Joe.
How could you forget your acro yoga bud?
I'm losing my acro yoga buddy.
Yeah, yeah, you you better, you better cozy up to to Kathy Lester. Yeah.
Yo Kathy, you wanna acro?
What up Lester? Uh, so anyway, so Chief Hahn, uh, first ever uh black chief of police for Sacramento is stepping down after a four-year term. Obviously, it was a very difficult uh time to to be chief of police, right? This was after Stefan Clark's murder. Um, this was after Joseph Mann. I mean, there was a lot actually uh of pretty horrible uh, things that happened to Sacramento's, particularly Sacramento's of color, black and brown at the hands of SAC PD. Um, and I think when he took office, there was a lot of hope in certain corners of the city that he would be sort of a herald of progress, right? Or of reform. Uh, he's now leaving with very little fanfare. I think a lot of people are kind of pensive about it and like, you know, what shoulda, coulda, woulda. Uh, and he is being replaced.
Knight Show, by the way. It's a Brian McKnight song.
Is it? I didn't know.
Mm-hmm, shoulda, coulda, woulda.
No, uh, and taking his position now is Chief Kathy Lester, which she will be the first woman police chief of Sacramento in history. Flo, uh, friend of the show, Marcus Breton. He, he's not really a friend of the show, guys, did a piece.
Guys JK.
He did a sort of a postmortem on Chief Hans four years. Uh, and and it it sounds like he reached out to you or he just fake quoted you.
He just made it up.
Talk to us a little bit about.
No, he did reach out to me.
Okay, okay. Talk to us a little bit about your reflections on, on it kind of, I don't know, I guess what you said to to Marcos, but feel free to elaborate a bit too, you know, um, your thoughts on Chief Hans four years as chief.
Yeah, I mean, as a black woman, you know, there is, there there is a, an understanding, you know, what's there's a saying in our community that what's understood doesn't need to be explained. And so there is always the feeling of like, when you see people in positions of authority, you recognize both the challenges that they're up against, um, because white supremacy is the law of the land. And also you recognize the responsibility that they have assumed by taking on that that mantle. Um, and so, you know, I I think for policing in particular, it's probably the most fraught of taking on those, you know, those um higher order positions because that institution has a a history and a charge that feels antithetical to our general, you know, affirmation as human beings. But at the same time, I think we all, you know, have a little bit of the sweet summer child in us and want there to be good things that could come of it. Like, I think we all hope that the reform is gonna do something meaningful. And so I think there was a lot of fanfare around Chief Han coming on. I think it doesn't hurt, you know, hashtag pretty privilege, that he's a nice looking guy. Um, and, you know, I think, I think he had all And I think that, you know, his pretty privilege was able to usher him in. And he was also the sort of, sort of, you know, as as Marcos kind of describes him as the anti-cop, until he became the top cop. And he, you know, for me, has been especially disappointing. Um, and this may be a stylistic thing, but he just always seemed a little too cavalier about it, like, you know, there's something of, there's something nice about the guy who's like, you know, hot stuff, but still is self-conscious enough to like work for it. And there's a feeling of like, maybe there was a little too much fanfare because he came in and just decided he was hot shit and was just gonna be hot shit. Um, but he, he didn't work for it. And then when he was faced with real institutional challenges, it always felt like he ran, you know, two thirds of the way and then started walking, right? And like, you know, you know, Stefan Clark murder is an example of that. Um, am I allowed to say murder? Do I have to say killing?
Hey dude, I said it. We're in this together now.
Like, I I'm like, that's an example. Um, I think the, you know, the protests in ESAC, I think the protests after George Floyd. I think the, the white supremacists, I think the Nazis at the Capitol. I mean, I just think, see so many examples. And I also think the way his department has terrorized people experiencing homelessness, which is a racial equity issue, because they are disproportionate to people of color and black people. And so I just feel a way about having a black police chief in, you know, in position and not seeing movement in these major areas where policing is problematic. And so I'm, you know, I I under, maybe there, what I, sort of what I said to to Marcos was like, I don't know what what challenges he was facing in the ranks, but he seemed to kowtow to them. And he seemed to be have more loyalty to them than he did the people he was paid to serve um and paid to protect. Um, and I I, you know, protect and serve has has always had a sort of ominous meaning to me because it's always felt like protect who and serve who. Um, and and that's, that's the question I think that that should should linger over his tenure as chief is protect who and serve who. Because it seemed to me like he did a lot of placating people who could have been pushed in a certain direction had he taken a hard line stance. And maybe he couldn't because his rank and file are just generally basura. And that's where they they land. And so if they're not gonna be anything other than trash, then that's
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we need a translator?
Sorry, yeah, like
So do you need me to translate?
Maybe that's where we land. Thank you, thank you, Dave. Like, I I I'm not, honestly, I'm not sure at this point. Because it just seemed to me like he never got close enough to what we actually needed from him. Um, and he was willing to, you know, speak out against white supremacists, but not do anything about what he was seeing both within his ranks, as well as actual white supremacists showing up at the Capitol and doing things that are illegal. So I don't wanna say good riddance, but I'm kind of like, I I'm, I'm millennial enough to just not be impressed. And maybe my Zenial roots will betray me here, but like, I just, I wanted more from you. I wanted, if you couldn't do the practical policy leadership, then I at least wanted some thought leadership. And I got neither from you.
He had a book club, though.
A book club, and he showed up and got to be cute on a regular basis.
Books are good. Well, I mean, he also, I feel like we have to remember what he did to during these demonstrations where he equated the
Yes.
white supremacists, the fascists in the street with the anti-fascists. And he said, these two are one in the same.
And that feels intentional.
Both of them are terrorists.
To know better than that.
Correct. Um, and it, when, when that happened, uh, I would, yeah, I guess I wasn't surprised. Um, but I I also knew where the direction that was gonna take us. And uh, we saw him come after somebody we know very well, right? Uh, and try and paint them as a terrorist. Uh, and this was after the LA Times came out and tried to paint every one of the hosts on this show as a terrorist. And um, I think that's the danger uh in a time like this when the neoliberal consensus is trying to maintain their power. Um, and this isn't like, I mean, it is an indictment on Hahn, but it's also like, the whole fucking system is broken. The, if it wasn't him, won't it be someone else? And I guess my question is Kathy Lester walking in, you know, the first woman police chief of our city, it's the same old joke, right? It's the same joke about like, you know, we need to like cage every children at the border. That's what Republicans are saying. And then Democrats are saying more women border guards, right? Like, that's the argument we're having right now. And like, it's all carceral and it's all backwards. And it it all needs to crumble.
I think that if we are holding true to our understanding of and movement toward an abolitionist future, then we have to be willing to say, it doesn't matter who sits in that seat. They will be a disappointment because they are embodying uh, it it because they are harm, trauma and violence embodied, right? So, ca- and and you can't reform a system that was built on trash anyway, right? On like
Asura.
Uh, right, correct. I'm sorry, use the wrong word, wrong language. So I think we just have to be willing to, um, I was gonna say, like, it's not like make friends with disappointment, but understand that that we are never going to as abolitionists, we're never going to be excited about who the next police chief is going to be. We're never going to endorse that person.
But I wish she had acro yoga, though, cuz like, Han could like really keep me up with his legs, you know?
You know, hopefully she's got a good like, uh, a leg routine.
It looks like she works out.
Okay, or she has to be light enough so I can hold her up. Like, either way, somebody, if we're gonna acro, somebody's gotta be, you know?
Yeah. You know, so time will tell, is I was, what I, what I'm hearing is
Yeah.
We'll wait and see. We'll wait and see what, what sweet ass acro yoga moves.
I'm just reminded that both, both Kathy Lester and Daniel Hahn were part of Sacramento Act's heat table prior to the eighty-four people being peddled illegally in East Sacramento.
Yeah.
And it made absolutely no difference. And so did their, their head of um, of training and all these other people who were brought in supposedly in this effort by the Sacramento area congregations together. So like, the faith, the interfaith community, to be able to start having these conversations. And I I just think it's really interesting that like Mary Westfall was was quoted in the article that that, you know, Marcos wrote and was just kind of like, this is a breach of faith. I was like, that's the best way to describe it. Because you pissed off the faith leaders. Like, do you know how, like?
It's, that's difficult to do.
There's a conservative bend to, to, you know, faith leaders, generally speaking. And I'm not saying that Sacramento Act is is necessarily super conservative, but I'm just saying like, there tends to be a conservative arc. And when you piss them off, I love it.
You, you, you put that cross away.
Like, the idea that you, that you really infuriate the faith community. Listen.
Correct, that's true, though.
Yeah, often they can be pretty cop friendly. Uh, just don't like, hit them with your bikes and arrest eighty-four of them. hit them with your bikes and arrest eighty-four of them and pull Ryan's shoulder out of its socket. Like just, that's not much to ask for.
Right. And also like, I mean, these are people who are try, who like, you know, turn the other cheek is like their mantra and they're like, but not you. Like.
But you, I'm gonna look you dead on.
I'm gonna leave your messages on read. You have a real problem. And I think that there's some soul searching that this department needs to have with itself about like, and also just some like general reading because I just, I always go with the ignorance or hubris. And I think ignorance, we wins out more often than hubris. I think most people are operating out of a lack of knowing than they are out of a just like, but I'm better than this.
Yeah.
This episode is exhausting.
This episode is exactly what I needed.
I'm tuckered.
It's a great send off, though.
Yeah.
All right. So what are our thoughts then? Like just real quick on Kathy Lester, uh, I've seen all official voices, even like some of the more quote unquote progressive ones, like Kevin McCarty are like, oh yeah, I like her. But my response is it, it does, it's not gonna matter.
Yeah. I mean, I think you have to start off when you're in official positions of, of power, you have to start off with like, we're really excited about. And then when things hit the fan, then you could get to just like distance yourself. So it's not surprising to me. I mean, it's, it's the Chief Hahn red carpet that's being rolled out, right? Like everybody was like, black chief, woo, 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 right? And then they're like, oh, that's all you got to offer? Yeah, I'm good, dude. Like, begone. Like, I don't know anybody who was like, oh man, the chief is leaving. That's so sad. He was doing really good work in this.
Dang, we were really impressed with that.
We were really impressed by crickets.
By his hashtag.
Yeah.
Be that.
Be, be the change.
Be the change.
Be the change, be the change.
Yeah, yeah. He tweeted that at me once.
I, I appreciate him being the change and changing his career path.
Yeah.
That was good for me. Yeah.
I appreciate the change that you are about to embark upon.
That internal congruency, I'm here for it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, Chief Lester, we look forward to seeing what you have to offer. And.
See how strong your legs are.
Yeah.
I hope it's not problematic white womanhood. Can we just hope for that?
But I mean, like cops kind of serve white women.
Yes. And that's why, that's why I'm like, I am calling this out specifically. I hope Kathy Lester, that you are not here at the service of problematic white womanhood. Because I think so often we talk about white men being at the top of the like patriarchal slash intersectional identities. And sometimes y'all are worse than they are. Um, oftentimes, y'all are worse than they are. So I don't want you thinking you're coming in here as a woman and that we're gonna give you all the passes because we have your, your name and number. There's a reason why Karen is trending and, and Darth Susan and all of the other things. And so don't come in here with the problematic white womanhood and then wanting to be cleaving to the womanhood because not here for it and it's twenty twenty-two almost. So try again, come with a different playbook.
That's a good cliff, cliffhanger. Twenty twenty-two, we might be having some real conversations on white feminism.
Oh my gosh, I love to think about it.
Fun.
No more passes. That's all.
Let's just end this episode now. I can't wait to get started on the next season. Uh, do we even need to do like a, like an outro? Let's do a little outro.
Love us.
Yeah, somebody, somebody.
Smash that subscribe button. Always wanted to do that, sorry.
If I was interested in preparing myself for what tone a, a season on white feminism might have here at Voices River City, where might I go for said preparations?
Neiman Marcus.
Correct.
I don't know the.
I don't, um.
I, I don't know how to tie voices into that.
Where the hell does peo, do people listen to Voices River City?
There we go. Um, that one I can answer a lot easier. Voices River City, we've been around for twenty, thirty, twenty years.
We've been around for a squillion years.
Squillion years. Yep. Look it up. We, it's on our Wiki. Uh, we have a, a website, voicesrivercity.com. Um, it's mostly the podcast right now. Um, but on occasion we will add other things. Uh, like I said, I'll be, um, updating the Follows the Money project for these coming elections. Uh, you can throw down some money for us, put a little pledge in on our Patreon, patreon.com slash Voices River City. Obviously all of our episodes are free right now, uh, but it, it just, it does help move us forward. It does help us keep our like subscriptions for news articles and stuff too. Uh, it also like, we are, as things open up, you know, fingers crossed, we will be doing like more hangouts. Uh, we do do patron hangouts. It can be really fun stuff. Uh, and like what I love about the Voices community is that it is a community that we do know such a good percentage of our listeners. Um, and there's nothing like someone walking up to you on the street and being like, hey, I like your show, you know, uh.
It's the best feeling. We love you all.
Yeah.
You should always say hi to us if you see us in public in the wild.
Do, yeah, and I'm very blind, so don't be offended if I don't recognize you, but.
Same. I need my glasses to see.
That's the problem. Um, but no, it's, it's like, it's just really cool stuff. And it's just like, sometimes you can feel like you're speaking into the ether, but like there is so much community around all of these fights we're doing. And when we come together and when we let each other know that that community is there and that we are not screaming into the ether, that strengthens us. Um, so thank you for all of you who have done that already. Um, and a welcome to all of you who haven't yet to do it, uh, if and when you ever do see us out there. Um, and yeah, I mean, we're on the socials, uh, Twitter, Voices River City, Instagram at Voices River City, always very funny. Facebook, Voices River City. I personally am on Twitter at UNO Kempo, Y U K N O W K E M P A.
I'm at, um, Shan and Dee Stevens.
And I am at Flojaune, F L O J A U N E. And Skylar is at Guillotine for you. That's Guillotine, the number four, Y O U.
Thing.
And I guess that's our show.
Yeah, we are excited about taking a little break. Um, but we do want you all to know that doing this show is a real joy for us. Uh, it's something that we look forward to every week. And while we're taking the break, we will miss coming together for, to talk about the news of the day.
But also rest is resistance. So.
And rest is resistance.
True. The breaks are always like, we've done one break really before, uh, it was so needed. But I also remember coming back and being so excited about it, as I'm sure we will again, on the other side of the, the new year.
Yeah. And, and just because we are going on a break, thank you so much to our listeners who have supported us throughout this year. We could not do this show without you, truly.
Literally.
We, it is because of you and your support that we can bring you the takes. So thank you so much. May your holidays be whatever you want them to be. May the.
Bright.
Happy and bright and full of snacks and naps.
All the, all the tasty snacks.
Um, and you know, happy fucking new year, yo.
Happy fucking new year.
Happy fucking new year.
We love you and we want you to stay. What does Skylar say?
Safe.
Safe.
Stay safe.
This is episode two oh one, Shannon.
Listen, I've been awake for many hours.
And then you say.
Stay sane.
And then I say, stay healthy. And then Dave says.
And stay the Omnicron away from me. Omicronathon. How do I even say it? I don't know.
Stay the Omicron away from us.
I'll learn how to say it next year.
It's okay. You can call it Omarion. That's why.
Stay Omarion away from you.
Omarion away from us.
Oh no, it's the Omarion variant.
Okay, Voices listeners, bye-bye.
All right, bye everyone.
That's the show. Bye-bye.